Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 16th. For those of you watching from home, thanks for tuning in. If you're able, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
[laughter] All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you have cell phones or pages or other devices, please put them on silent. All right, tonight's a great night. We have a lot of great stuff to do as a board. And the first thing I'd like to do tonight is welcome our guest of honor, Frank Nelson. Frank, welcome. With that being said, we have our Council on Aging with us today, and I would like to introduce, he's behind the door, the Chairman of the Council on Aging, Bruce Hompous. Thank you, Bruce, welcome.
I'd like to introduce our Director Marilyn Mather, and she's going to do the presentation.
Thank you, Bruce. Hi Marilyn, welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd first like to introduce our Board of Directors for the Council on Aging. We have our, where is our Vice Chair, Lynda Gibson, sitting in the back row, and we have our Secretary, Monica, and then we have, let me see, Marguerite Morse, and Joni McAndrew. Did I miss anybody from the board?
No.
Okay, awesome. And then I, we have staff here as well, Wendy Adams, she's our Outreach Coordinator, and Franny Dible, who is our, do everything for me, girl. She actually has been charged about that on Tuesday. I'm just very excited about this. I've been with the COA myself for going on eight years, and I have known Frank for that amount of time, and known of his amazing work in volunteerism and his commitment to the seniors and the Council on Aging. One of which, he was the Co-Chairman of the Board for the Building Committee that built that beautiful new building we're in. Well, it's 18 years old now, but it's still a new building for us. And he was very instrumental in getting that done in such a beautiful way, having a background in construction, meaning exactly what he was doing. Also, he was the Chairman of the Board, the earliest I could find was 1992, where he was the Chairman of the Board, and he retired in 2012.
Wow.
So, he also was presented the President's Service Award, as well as his wife Pearl, both awarded that for giving over 4,000 hours of volunteer time in their lifetime. So, he's got a big place in my heart, and we all love him dearly, and we just couldn't wait to honor him with this little presentation. Yeah, he's going to kill me, I know he is.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that the Council on Aging voted to name a room after Mr. Nelson in recognition of his outstanding service and number of years. This room went under some major renovations recently with the assistance of our new Director and a number of volunteers, including Jim Henderson, who's now on the board. But Mr. Nelson, we have a small presentation. I know it's nothing in exchange for everything you've done for the town, and especially for our seniors, so I'll turn it over to our youngest member of the board, Anthony.
We have a proclamation for you, Mr. Nelson. Whereas Frank Nelson worked tirelessly on behalf of the senior citizens of the town of West Bridgewater throughout his countless hours of service with the Council on Aging, and whereas Frank Nelson served as Chairman of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for over 20 years, providing his historic, historical perspective, expertise, and steadfast leadership. Whereas Frank Nelson served as the Vice Chairman of the Senior Building Committee, where his assistance included fundraising and grant preparation, proving to be instrumental to its success. And whereas Frank Nelson was nationally recognized as a recipient of the President's Call to Service Award from the President's Council on Service and Civil Participation in 2005, and whereas Frank Nelson served the country as a member of the United States Navy during World War II, and is a member of the so aptly-named Greatest Generation. And whereas, in recognition of Frank Nelson's service, the Council on Aging Board and the Board of Selectmen voted to honor him by naming a conference room at the Senior Center, the Frank W. Nelson Conference Meeting Room. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby recognize Frank Nelson for his long, longtime steadfast service to the town, and his many contributions toward the betterment of the Senior Center, and do hereby proclaim him to be a selfless pillar of the community. And further, with the power vested in us, do I declare Thursday, October 17th, 2007, as Frank W. Nelson Day.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
All right.
Frank, let's see, four senior centers, Spring Street School, then the Center of Town, Howard School, and finally into your own building. You're along the whole time. Five directors, one Frank Nelson. Great accomplishment. Again, on behalf of the entire town and the entire board, we thank you very, very much for all you've done. Congratulations.
[applause]
Board, can we take a three-minute recess?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you. And we are back in session. Next on the agenda is Diane Perry for the CAM planning.
Good evening. I'm Diane Perry from the ADA Board, and we're going to have a two-day training on CAM monitoring. I don't know if anybody knows what it is. It's to be accessible, to find out how things are supposed to be for people with disabilities. It's a two-day workshop being held by the state, and we're hosting it, and Randolph's hosting it. And it's going to get St. Anne's and the Paris Center. And they're going to teach you everything you need to know, and then you get certified at the end as a Community Access Monitor. We have people coming from Quincy, situat, we have town administrators, we have the Selectmen, we have a lot of GPW people coming, so it's going to be a mix of everybody. We just want everybody to know. Anybody have any questions?
Just to clarify, it's in Randolph?
No.
Okay.
It's St. Anne's.
That's what I thought you said, but I thought you said it was in Randolph.
No, Randolph is co-hosting.
Oh, great, so it's in West Bridgewater at St. Anne's Church?
Yeah.
And is there a fee, or is it open?
The fee is $85 for, like, Selectmen people like that, the everyday person pays $15, and that covers the food. We serve breakfast and lunch for the two days, and it's from 9:00 to 4:00.
Very good.
It's something good to know.
Thank you very much, Diane, appreciate it. ADA Committee's been doing a great job. You guys revamped it probably about six years ago, and been going full speed ever since. 10 years ago, huh? Wow. Well, great job, thank you very much.
But it's something good for everybody to know.
Absolutely.
David, you're welcome to go.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Cultural Council appointments, David?
Yep, so there are three people being recommended, and I believe that Joan McAndrew is here to speak to it.
I am the Chairman, or former Chairman almost, I'm on my way out. So, thanks to Mallory putting it out on Facebook and everything, the word got out, and we've got three new ones, we had three new ones last month, so we got six new members.
Wow.
So, we're doing great, because I'm losing my board. Everybody's leaving at the same time, so we get some young ideas coming in, and I'd like to introduce Jean Smith, Lauren.
Angie.
And I'm Lauren, I just met them for the first time. I've known Jean for many years.
If you don't mind, if you could just each take like one minute, introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about why you want to be involved in that committee. Don't mean to put you all on the spot.
Okay. Not that I'm, I'm used to being put on the spot, since I'm a Lions Club member. And as with the Cultural Council, I was taking notes, they've appointed me their Secretary. My name is Jean Smith, I've been living in the town for over 40 years, have been working corporate America, and now that I'm semi-retired, I'm volunteering and paying back.
Thank you. All right, who's next? We'll go in reverse order. Lauren?
Hi, I'm Lauren Feroli. So, I've been in West Bridgewater 11 years now, and I have two daughters, one of whom's going into second grade, so we're just, you know, we love West Bridgewater and all the cultural events we've attended, you know, the library programs, the Park Day programs, and my daughter's very enthusiastic about the arts. I'm a scientist, but I'd like to be enthusiastic about the arts more, and get more involved, and my husband's a musician, so it sounds like a definite match for me, and I'm interested in starting to help the community more.
Excellent. Thank you very much, welcome. Angie?
Hi, I'm Angie McCormick. I actually just moved to West Bridgewater a couple weeks ago. Yeah, so I have two small children, so I'd like to attend all the different cultural, you know, events that the Cultural Council puts on, so I thought it would be a good way to meet new people and to put my feet back in for young children, for what, children events.
Thank you. Before we take a vote on the appointment, I would just like to clarify, we didn't have a mass exiting for any other reason than state law only allows people to serve on the commission for two terms, and most of the members on that committee, their terms have expired by state law, so no one's being forced out, no one left in a hurry. They've all done a great job for a good number of years, and we thank all them. With that being said, I want to sustain a motion.
So moved.
All right, those in favor? Aye.
Right.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any of the all have to be sworn in?
They do. You've already talked about it.
Oh, okay.
They know. Gave them the heads up.
Very good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, Ben, who's Ben? There you are. I believe the flag's moved, Ben's moved, I'm used to being over there, I'm used to flag over there. You're here representing the Cable Committee?
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
Awesome. So, this is Zach Gorman, he is a new to West Bridgewater, and he's worked in the access, cable access field, he's a Station Manager at Holbrook. But we have an available opening in our board from previously held by Robert Beavis, and we decided that myself and the rest of the board last week voted, well, the board voted unanimously to appoint Zach as a member of our Cable Committee, and I'll let Zach introduce himself and tell a little about himself.
How you doing? Zach Gorman, I've been here for about a year in West Bridgewater, consider myself civically-minded based on my current employment, I work in Holbrook, doing the job that Ben does, been doing that for, coming up on five years, and heavily versed in the process and procedure of what the town of West Bridgewater is about to embark on with negotiations with Comcast for the next cable license agreement. So, I always looking for opportunity to get involved, and this is something that fits an area that I actually understand and know, so I thought it was a good opportunity to get involved here.
Well, kudos to the Cable Committee, who, again, another committee that sat dormant for a number of years, and that was revamped probably six, seven years ago, because I was wrong with the ADA Committees a number of years. So, I might have been wrong with, everything seems like it was yesterday to me, but, so it's a great committee, that's very, very active, that again sat dormant for a number of years, and having new people that just moved in town wanting to get involved is exciting. Years ago, if you look through our town report, you'd see it was the same people on every committee in town, there was about 30 names in the whole book, and so it's great to have some new names and some new people in town, so welcome, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for the appointment?
I give you a motion to appoint Zach.
Motion, Anthony, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, congratulations, good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, moving on, I don't think the rest of the trustees are here yet, so we will move on to Board of Selectmen Business and Warrants, ratify the Police Lieutenant's contract, David?
Sure, so you had the contract before you. I've sat with the Police Lieutenant, we have negotiated that. It came within line that the Board had authorized us to negotiate in, so I'm just looking for a vote to ratify the contract.
So moved.
Second, and I'd just like to note that for the public, that it is below, the salary bound is below where Vic would have been, should he still be Lieutenant.
Any further questions? I know this, again, was a long process, it's not just simply our meeting tonight, a lot of input and negotiations, so thank you to the office staff. Can I move the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ratify the Treasurer Collector's contract.
Yep, so same thing, again, long process with that as well. As you know, you did interviews at your last meeting, and so the Board authorized me as to how much to spend for our new Treasurer Collector. I've sat with Mr. Golda, we have entered into an agreement, and I'm looking for your vote to ratify it as well.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, thank you. Ben, while you're still here, so I'll put you on the spot again. You have the floor.
So, we are looking to appoint Attorney William Solomon as our Special Legal Counsel for our cable negotiations with Comcast. He did, he helped us out for the previous contract back in 2009, and he is one of the few attorneys that actually specializes with cable access and contract renewals, so we are looking for your vote.
And just so you're aware, the contract's been vetted by our legal counsel as well, he's sworn off on, and I agree with Ben, is that Attorney Solomon specializes in this, he's the right person to be working on our behalf.
Ben, maybe it's a little premature, but I'm going to tell you, one thing I hear all the time is, why isn't there a discount for senior citizens? Comcast has told me there is a discount for senior citizens, but you have to have the very, very basic programming, as long as you don't have anything other than the basic, there is a discount, and you've got to fill out some paperwork, so that might be something to keep in mind during the negotiations.
It is something, and we do talk about that at our meetings. Unfortunately, the way it's set up, a lot of cable committees don't have a lot of leverage about adjusting the cable rates, but we do agree with you, and that's actually the package that we have at my house, but if Zach wants it.
Yeah, well, I actually was at the last meeting, and we kind of talked a little bit about making senior citizens more aware of that discount and how to get it, instead of just calling Comcast and saying, "Any cable?", and then getting hooked up with the $200 cable bill, letting them know the options they have to utilize that discount.
Is there, I know we can't affect their cable rates because their cable rates, but could they get a discount on the local assessment, maybe? Is that a possibility, or?
I don't know that that is possible, but I-
Just something to keep in mind during the negotiations.
It's always worth it.
Very good, thank you very much. Have you, you have any experience working with this gentleman in Holbrook?
Will Sol, Bill Solomon, no, I do not. We use a different attorney, but there are, like Mr. Gagney and Ben said, there's only three attorneys that deal in this, and they're all, they're all pretty, pretty good, and I have colleagues of ours that have worked with them as well, and I've heard nothing but good things.
Very good, thank you.
We're good hands.
What, do you have any questions?
No, I'd just like to talk, sing a little Ben, who's put an awful lot of work and effort into this thing. We appreciate what you do, Ben, because you're always there for us, and you keep this thing moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to go along with that appointment there.
Second. David, this fee, is it already budgeted in, do you know, or?
Yep, so it'll be paid for out of their local cable budget.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Award Town Hall Cleaning Service Contract?
Yep, so, Mr. Chairman, we do this, we do this on annual basis, it is the same company that we've been using. I hate to say this on camera, but to be honest with you, they do a really good job, and for what we pay, I mean, you can't get a better deal. So, again, they were the lowest bidder, and so I'll be looking for the Board to award another one-year contract to the same company, ComClean.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Anthony, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have an extension of entertainment license for Nora's Hookah Lounge. They want to change Monday to Saturday, 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM. I don't believe we've received any complaints or issues with the establishment?
Yep, we've not had the complaints currently, they're Thursday through Saturday, so they're looking to add Monday through Wednesday. They're currently 9:00 to 11:30, so they're looking to add a couple of hours, but the reality is, they've been doing a good job, we haven't had any issues or complaints, and it's, you're already serving alcohol, so it's just extending the entertainment license.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Site Plan Review, David, for One Component Park?
So, Site Plan Review for Capone Park, what this company is looking to do is to distribute plants, it is going to go before the Planning Board, it is a buy right, because it is in our, in the right district for industrial use, however, they'll be reviewing it just for parking and lighting and security, so again, just a basic site plan review.
If I could change hats real quick, I can tell you, this company's been an outstanding contributor to the Lions Club, and they seem like they're real good neighbors, the town they're moving from, I believe, is Randolph, said they're excellent, they're always helping out all the organizations in the town itself, so it's great to have a new business in town that sees the importance to be a part of the community. Does anyone have any concerns about the Site Plan Review? I would just like to stick in, like I always do, if they're going to add any lighting that's visible from the street, that they try to use the lanterns we're trying to incorporate throughout the business district on 106 and 28, try to keep all noise to a minimum during off-business hours, and any changes to the building, that they always consider aesthetics. That'll be my motion to send on.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Site Plan Review for the Rod and Gun Club.
What I've seen from voting on the Board of Directors over there?
Thank you.
So, they already have an outdoor patio, what they're looking to do is that they're looking to be able to serve alcohol and food outside, they've already have, basically their court already established, they'll do a couple of little modifications with the fence, but Mr. Kaminski is here too, if you want to be able to ask him any questions directly.
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions. Mike, do you want to add anything? We don't have any questions, but if you want to say anything? No?
No, if you have any questions, I'm here, is it, Bill Henderson, he's the President here, is there anything that needs to be answered here while we're here?
Very good. Okay, does anyone have a motion to approve, or send a no concerns? So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. CNC Smith Writing Farm, that is coming off the agenda, that wasn't necessary.
That is correct.
Motion to approve the minutes for June 2nd, June 12th, June 28th?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 28th? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of July 19th and August 3rd for review?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee Transfer, IT Department, David?
Yep, and that is no longer necessary at this point.
Act on the Agricultural Commission's Requests?
It is a resignation from one of the members, he is informing-
Oh, resignation, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. So, he's informing the Board that due to personal issues, he's going to be unable to serve, and therefore, he's put in his resignation notice.
Motion to accept the resignation without thanks? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, we have a few minutes waiting for the Library Trustees. I would like to point out that we still have numerous vacancies. One notable vacancy, or a number of vacancies, is on the West Bridgewater Rent Control Board. We really reach out to the community and ask that if you're interested in serving on the Rent Control Board, you should have no conflict or personal relationship or friendship with tenants and/or park owner, or owners, and we encourage you to submit your name for consideration to the Board of Selectmen's office. Right now, we have numerous vacancies on this board, and that board cannot meet until some appointments are made. Correspondent from, I'm sorry, communications reports from Boards, Commissions, and Town Officials, I don't see any. Correspondents from the public to determine a course of action. We have none. Public comment period? Anyone have anything to discuss that's not on the agenda? None. All right, David, we'll start with the Administrator's Report.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, first on the list is just an FYI in the Library Union Certification. At our last meeting, we authorized Town Council David Gator represent us in Boston. You have before you the Department of Labor Relations Certification, so they have been certified. There is still a disagreement as to who should be in the union, they are looking to add a couple of management employees, we obviously don't want them to be in it, so we'll have to hash that out, and in the meantime, there has also been a unfair labor practice that has been charged against us as well, so we will have a hearing on that in September. But again, just bringing the Board up to speed, that they have been officially certified at this point, and we're moving forward in that process.
Okay. Town Hall Painting Project?
Town Hall Painting Project, so how does it look?
Looks awesome.
It's a great job.
So, what we've done is, is that we painted this room, we painted the hallway and the administrative offices as well. It was in dire need of being updated. We wanted to try to stay true to the town colors, so we added maroon and white. If we added too much white, I think that it would have been a little bit bland, so that's why we have some of the cream color, but in the spirit of West Bridgewater and continuously branding going forward using the town colors, we have maroon and white. And then what I will be doing is discussing with this board that next year, I would like to be able to do a similar project downstairs on the first floor as well, so we have continuity throughout the entire building.
That's great.
And I may add that from a funding standpoint, is that we were able to find money through savings in our budgets, so it did not cost any additional money. Town Hall Roof Project, this is, again, basically an FYI, because the next time that you meet is that hopefully, in theory, the project will have already started. It's slated to start the week after Labor Day, and Labor Day comes a little early this year. It is going to be a four- to five-week project, so I want anybody that's watching and listening to this now to know that parking will be impacted, there will be a dumpster outside, we will have everything cornered off and taped off, but obviously, in the interest of public safety, we're going to have shingles coming off the roof, there's going to be a lot of scaffolding around the building, we're going to try to do our best to make sure there's a negative impact, as little impact as possible, but it's a large roof project, it will take a month, we're all just going to have to be a little bit patient as we go through it, but because the roof leaks, it's something we have to do, and certainly doing it before the onset of winter. And the last is, is at Friendship Park. If you have an opportunity to go down, I went down there yesterday. I want to say a really nice job to the Forestry Superintendent, we secured funding in June at town meeting through CPC funds, and the entire project is already done, completed. There was more than a handful of families with their young children down there utilizing it yesterday, it was a beautiful day. Again, it came out great, we have almost a whole foot of mulch that is there to make sure that we mitigate any injuries or impact if someone falls. It looks good, it was really just a nice job, it was done quickly, and it's just become another, a nice asset to the town.
David, adding on to the Friendship Park, there is now a support organization called Friends of Friendship Playground Park, and they just started meeting, and that will be an ongoing fundraising and volunteer group to help kind of oversee and help support projects there that are desired by the Park Superintendent. Okay. We only have one Library Trustee.
I think there may have been a mix-up about how we were doing this, I wasn't actually clear about it myself, so, I mean, we met, we met last night, you know, and welcomed Christine on board, but I'm not sure.
How many trustees are there?
We understood it was, there were five.
Five.
But a number of them were not going to be allowed in here tonight, I thought David was coming in.
Some of them had boy scouts.
That would be a four-four then, because there's a total of eight possible votes, and four of us are present. Does that mean we can't vote? Is there any way you could get a hold of anybody that could run down?
I emailed and texted. Let's see. Let's see if I can get David here.
You just need one member to-
Right, I thought, I was sure he was coming. Let me, let me get him a call outside.
Thank you. Why don't we call the Lieutenant and his family in?
Sure.
Yeah, brought my kids.
Proper kids. Some of you don't mind, you could stand over here if we need more room. I think we're
Hey, Timmy, how are you?
How are you?
Sorry.
No.
Welcome.
Chief Clark, come on in here. How are you, chief?
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Welcome. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, again, we always, uh, love when we have some good news and some good things to celebrate. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce our police chief, Vic Flaherty. Vic, good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, you have some, uh, some guests here. I don't know if you or the lieutenant would like to introduce them?
Well, you can look at the lieutenant. This is nice.
All right, lieutenant.
These are my children. Timmy, Caitlin's birthday is tomorrow. Maggie.
Mom.
Welcome. Mom Judy, so I have a good name. My wife Carrie. Um, you know the workers, but my friends here, uh, will, Dawn, these stories I'm making up. Uh, the Forrest family from Westwood.
Lieutenant, we have an officer in the back of the room in a uniform we don't recognize.
Uh, that is my former training officer from Bridgewater, Bobby Bailey.
Welcome, Bobby.
Who was also Timmy's daughter.
Thanks for coming. Okay. Annie? Uh, for those of you not aware, at the last selectmen's meeting, uh, Lieutenant Nixon was voted in as our official lieutenant of the town. And tonight will be the official swearing-in and penning of the lieutenant.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Timothy Nixon.
Have been appointed lieutenant of the police department.
I've been appointed lieutenant of the police department.
Of the town of West Bridgewater.
Of the town of West Bridgewater.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all my duties.
Discharge and perform all my duties.
Accommodate upon me accordingly.
Accommodate upon me accordingly.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeable to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Agreeable to the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the town of West Bridgewater.
And the town of West Bridgewater.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is not your chance to get back in here.
No, it's not.
Need help? Yep. Top.
Did you guys rehearse at home?
Dot sound. That's my chestnut. All right, just put it down.
Lieutenant, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I'll keep, actually, thank you. I wouldn't be here without all of you. And, uh, again, I work with good guys and work for a great town, so thank you.
On behalf of the entire town and the board, we wish you best of luck and thanks for your continued service. Thank you very much. Two-minute recess. In session. Um, she doesn't realize this, but, um, Annie is here for dual purposes. And, uh, on behalf of the board, Annie, we have a small presentation for you. And we have a proclamation. Whereas Annie Giannatelli began her service with the town of West Bridgewater in two thousand eight, serving as assistant town clerk in two thousand ten, and becoming elected as town clerk in two thousand fifteen. And whereas Annie Giannatelli immediately sought out professional development resources to become an expert in her field, enrolling in the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Certified Municipal Clerk Program. And whereas Annie Giannatelli has graduated from the Certified Municipal Clerk Program, earning this distinguished distinction through her hard work and diligence to master the complex duties of a town clerk after completing a rigorous curriculum. And whereas Annie Giannatelli, as a certified municipal clerk, will continue to perform her duties honorably and ensure that the town of West Bridgewater operates at the same manner, maintaining a high level of faith for the citizens of the town of West Bridgewater. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby recognize Annie Giannatelli for all her hard work in obtaining this distinction amongst her peers and do hereby declare her to be a duly dedicated public servant, working entirely from the betterment for the town of West Bridgewater. It wind us here, we hundo, we set our hand, cause the great sale of the town of West Bridgewater, affix this sixteenth day of August two thousand seventeen, Jerry Lawrence, Anthony Kennyhand and Eldon Marra. Congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Congratulations.
Oh, that's so nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do what?
Do what? Look, thank you. Thank you very much. That's very nice. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I was proudly present when you hung it on the wall. That was a nice little ceremony we had down there.
Yes, it was very nice. It was a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Wonderful.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is in September. I have to look the date. I don't know as to whether or not we scheduled it right after Labor Day or not.
Okay.
You gonna announce your, uh, day of the pack there?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, uh.
Cross signals, I guess.
Yep, no problem. Um, before we adjourn, I will remind people, thanks to Eldon reminding me to remind people, that the West Bridgewater Annual Park Day, this is the twenty-sixth year, will be on Sunday, September tenth. Uh, it's an exciting day in town. We hope you all come out and visit us and thank the numerous, uh, businesses and organization in town for their support. And of course, we hope you'll come out and support the, uh, numerous, numerous organizations that take part in the, in the event. And, uh, if you haven't been, it's a great day. We have a lot of new people living in town. Come on out and catch the Wildcat spirit.
I also want to thank Jerry, who puts an awful lot of effort into this and does a great job there. And, uh, we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Eldon.
I just wanted to let you know, our next meeting's September sixth.
Okay.
So we have a meeting.
That's on the agenda then. They still have a quorum, so they can meet. Okay. All right. Uh, do we have anything else to come before us? No executive session this evening? Okay. Want to stand a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.